Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is May sixth, twenty twenty five. And this is the meeting of the Northborough Planning Board. Um, this meeting is fully remote. And I don't have to read the blurb anymore, so um it is now six oh five. And first on our agenda is an A and R for ninety nine Crawford Street. And um Lori said she would um present this. There's no applicant here tonight.
Can you see it? Okay?
Mm hmm.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, uh, so this A and R is uh just the creation of one new lot out of a very large parcel that, oh, I just see that is upside down, so let me see if I can. So it's one lot out of a thirty six acre parcel. So it does have sufficient frontage. It does have sufficient area. And it is uh one hundred percent uplands. Uh, so you can see that there is an upland, I'll blow it up a little bit. calculation of eighty thousand one hundred and eighty two square feet. So this is a conventional lot. And it is located within the residential B zoning district.
Okay, did you have any concerns with it?
I did. Uh, the first version of the plan did not include the upland area. So I asked them to revise the plan to include it. And they have since done that, so my comments have been fully addressed.
Okay, and um I'm not sure if board members heard, but um um the town engineer Josh had written a letter and he had no comments.
Yeah, saw that.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have a comment?
Nope, no. No.
Lori, I just have one quick question, and maybe you didn't see their property. Is this the one that has the garage in the back? So I was wondering if this lot includes, they look like they have like a contractor yard garage on their parcel.
Um. There is an existing dwelling that's under construction, but I I don't. I can pull up the uh. Let's see.
We know that it would probably change this. I was just curious. If this included the house and the garage, or it just was the house on the on the street.
Let me um. See if I can pull up the.
Amy, are you talking about like that it looks like a red barn?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, pull it up on Google Maps here.
Oh, actually, can you share that? I will unshare. If you have Google Maps on, that's what I was just gonna do. And so if you could share your screen to show that, that'd be great.
Sure.
Is this the same area where somebody was looking to build a few years ago, but there were a lot of water issues or drainage issues?
Uh, that is a different parcel on Crawford Street.
Okay.
All right, are you guys able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I zoomed in a little bit, but what Amy's referring to is this red barn here.
Okay. Oh, okay, I was thinking of a different lot, actually. There's another one that has um a a barn way out in the back.
Oh.
A different parcel, but but that's it's good that you brought this up. So the house and the barn must be included on the parcel in the A and R.
Barn is not shown on the A and R for whatever reason.
Mm hmm. It it doesn't have to be, though, does it normally?
Well, ideally, you like to show existing structures.
Mm hmm.
But the from the edge of the house to the property line is ninety one point five feet. So certainly, there would be plenty of land. Uh, so that that barn wouldn't be in the side setback, I don't believe.
What happened if we approved an A and R and the barn was in the side setback? Now it's um nonconforming.
Well, I suppose it's preexisting, um, so it's already been built, so the building inspector would not require that to be taken down.
That I saw once, though, you weren't allowed to make a lot that made the parcel, the properties on the um lot nonconforming, you know?
Well, remember, the only thing that you're allowed to look at with A and Rs are the adequacy of the roadway. Uh, providing frontage. The adequacy of the access to the buildable portion of the lot. And whether there's sufficient frontage, so a parcel could come before you with less than the minimum lot size requirement. Uh, so it could be nonconforming in that way. However, um, you can't deny the A and R on that basis. So that's why we always require the note to be put on the A and R plan that says that compliance with zoning or other regulations is neither expressed nor implied.
But so you're saying they need to have eighty thousand square feet? So they could bring something forward for sixty thousand square feet and then have a nonconforming lot?
Um, we, yes, essentially, so it wouldn't be a buildable lot, but if it already had a structure on it, then it would meet the requirements for an A and R.
Let me cast town council on that. I don't I don't think they can do that. Because then, like, I can use my lot and make a nonconforming lot and then have enough room to build another house, like that wouldn't make sense.
Like I said, if you have sufficient frontage with both lots. And the roadway is sufficient and the access to the buildable portion of the lot is adequate. Then the planning board pretty much has to approve it. That doesn't make that doesn't make a buildable lot, however. So if it's an undersized lot, then it won't be buildable unless the ZBA grants a dimensional variance.
I thought you needed frontage and lot size, those two things.
You do not.
I'd like to double check on that, like, that doesn't make sense at all, because I there are builders that can get really tricky with what they wanna do.
Mm hmm. I'd be happy to forward you the links to the A and R handbook.
I haven't.
It it explains that you can only look at those three criteria. You cannot deny you cannot deny an A and R because of inadequate lot area. Like I said, they're creating a nonbuildable lot, so you can require a note to be put on that lot, so saying that this is not a buildable lot.
Yeah, but if they've already built on it, then it doesn't matter.
So when we get to the next A and R. Um, if you, if you recall, I know Amy, you and I went back and forth, we did get uh an opinion from town council, which I'd be happy to read into the record. So in that instance, you have two lots with two buildings on them. Um, and uh, one of the lots is very much insufficient in area. And uh, I, like I said, I'd be happy to read the legal opinion when we get to that point.
Okay, well, for this one right now, this has adequate frontage, inadequate lot size.
Quick question, is this? So is this A and R for this house, or is this somewhere else near this property? Kind of confused.
So there's a thirty six acre parcel. So what they're doing is they're carving out one lot from the larger parcel.
Mm hmm.
I don't, I don't know the purpose of that. I anticipate that they're interested in doing something with the remaining land, whether it's a subdivision or whether it's an A and R, I I can't tell you.
Okay, so it's not this property, it's either to the right or the left or behind it is what.
So it's the the large, so it's the large parcel um that is being subdivided to create this lot.
Is it, is it this house, or is there something, is it another property?
Like I said, I don't, I don't know what their intent is to do with the remaining land.
But are you asking Anthony if this house is on that lot that they are creating?
Right, it's not real. So there's a separate lot that's not related to this property that we're looking at right now. I mean, it's related, but it's we're not looking at it right now on this picture.
I I think that is the property.
Okay. I think I understand. So it's, it's not here, it's maybe adjacent to it, this house or wherever where they're building this separate lot, and I think I understand. I'm making this.
I don't think they're building anything yet. They're just subdividing.
Do they have adequate square footage to build on that second lot, or they? Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Millie Milton?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay, the second A and R on the list is twenty four Colburn Street, twenty eight Overlook Park.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen again.
This one would looked like a lot of lines. I couldn't even figure it out on my own. The drawing.
All right, can you see it? Overlook Park and?
Yeah.
Yeah, Colburn Street. Do you see the A and R?
Hmm.
No?
I I see the um lot, the site plan there.
Okay, so you see the A and R plan? It says amended A and R?
Yep. We just can see Park. It's hard to find Colburn Street. It's way over on the left, I guess.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to look for.
Okay, so a little bit of explanation here. Uh, so these uh two parcels are owned by uh the same person. And uh the this dotted line right here. If you can follow my arrow denotes the existing property line. So what they are interested in doing is um making, so apparently the house is kind of on a cliff. So what they wanna do is they want to uh relocate the lot line so they can either move the house or demolish the house and build a new house. Um, in an area that is kind of safer. And um uh preferable to the property owner. So like I said, this is a situation where you have a lot that's very much undersized. So um there, there is a hybrid process for approving the creation of lots that don't meet the minimum frontage and uh requirements, so uh as you can see, this lot right here is landlocked. So they have no frontage at all. Um, so their access is derived from an easement. So I did reach out to town council uh to see if uh we should go through the traditional A and R process, or we should go through the, it's it's a process derived from a uh litigation uh with Segwin. And essentially, it's a two-step process that involves going to the ZBA first for frontage variance and then coming to the planning board. Um for A and R approval, or actually definitive plan approval. So his email to me said, Lori, on this, I reviewed the plan and confirmed that A and R endorsement is required because the plan does not show a division of land into two or more lots, a subdivision. It shows the division of one lot, twenty eight Overlook Park, into a lot and a nonbuildable parcel. The nonbuildable parcel will be combined with an existing lot. Uh, so that would be the twenty fourth Colburn. Because it does not show a subdivision, the planning board does not need to consider frontage and is required to endorse the plan A and R. As noted on the plan, of course, the planning board endorsement does not mean that the lots conform to the zoning bylaws. As we discussed, use of the lots going forward may require further approvals under the zoning bylaws. So um that was a a further question having to do with the placement of the the house. Should they decide to demolish the existing home and build new? Uh, but as far as I know, they have not made that decision as of yet, so they may just be moving it. As I mentioned.
Where is the lot line going? I see lot line to be removed.
So it's this is the new lot line. In the center.
So it looks like to me on the left, it's making a bigger lot, is?
So it's essentially moving the lot line.
Does it change like the lot size? Does that get bigger than it originally was?
So the, the new size of the lots. Let me see, look at by my uh printed version is much easier for me to see. So the new lot area is denoted here. Um, so twenty four Colburn Street will now have thirty two thousand nine hundred and forty one square feet. And uh the twenty eight Overlook drug park will now have thirty six thousand seven hundred and seventy six square feet.
And what is the lot size for that area?
Uh, the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet.
Oh, so they're both.
Yeah, they're fine. So they're both compliant.
Yeah.
They, so twenty four Colburn was not originally compliant.
Right.
Um, and like I said, it doesn't have frontage. So that was the question that I had for him.
So how does that work when you don't have frontage? Did you just grandfather it in, or how does that work?
Um. Well. So if it was a a lot that did not have a structure on it, then it would have to go to the zoning board of appeals for a frontage variance first, and then it would come to the planning board for the A and R.
So how does it not have frontage? There's a house on that, right?
Uh, because they have an easement. So there, these are old camps. So both of the homes are a hundred years old. So they predated zoning by
Where's?
Uh, about fifty years. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And because it's existing, then it is grandfathered if I'm.
Essentially.
Gotcha.
Oh. Huh.
Interesting. Did they get to it from overlook or down the gravel drive from Colburn? I'm just curious.
So in the notes here, it talks about an easement.
Mm hmm.
So it says uh AP twenty nine lot fifty one is subject to a right-of-way easement, as mentioned indeed, book two one nine three, page one seventy six, and on a plan entitled Plan of Land in Northborough owned by Alfred Mitchell. It's this note right here.
Uh huh. What does that mean? Where's the easement? Is it through Overlook Park? Or through Colburn Street where it says gravel drive?
Yeah, yeah, looking at a map, it looks like it's going straight from Colburn and kind of a shared gravel driveway.
Hmm. And it looks like that's the same owner.
Yeah. Wait, where where is Colburn Street? I'm a little lost on the orientation here.
So it's on the way to the Solomon Pond Mall.
And the senior center. I know where it is. I just don't see it on here.
Oh, you can see it in the locus. I'm gonna move it up a little bit. So you can see Colburn Street is there. And then the projected area is here, so they have an easement.
Hmm.
And then, as you can see, they have they have all these gravel driveways.
Right, right, I saw that.
These two lots are owned by the same individual.
Yeah.
And there's a right-of-way here.
Hmm. Interesting. Yeah, so town council saw this and he thought it was okay for us to approve.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Not for me.
No. Not for me either.
Nope.
I hear a motion to approve the A and R for twenty four Colburn Street, twenty eight Overlook Park.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Um, Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. So that has been approved. Lori, have you heard if they're gonna go forward with the duplex that's right near there? That we approved?
I haven't heard anything since um since they were last before us. But of course, they have this is eight, three years. So uh, they're still working under that limit.
That was two.
Uh, actually, it's a variance, so it's one year.
Oh. And it was a special permit for a duplex, so that would be two years too.
Yeah, so the one year is the uh closest deadline.
Mm hmm.
It's gotta be getting nearer, isn't it?
I feel like it's gotta be coming up.
Funny, no one ever builds that, you know, in that lot. Maybe they get the permits and then can't find a buyer.
Yeah.
All right, next on the agenda, we have minutes. Did anyone have uh any additional amendments to the minutes for April first?
Did not.
Nope, is that the uh is April first? Is that the one? Amy, you had a couple changes?
I did.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, that's, yeah, I like those changes, so nothing else.
Okay, do I, Millie, are you still looking, or do you want?
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here for this one.
Oh, okay. So do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes for April first?
Removed?
Second.
Second. Okay, Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Abstained.
And Bill Pierce?
Aye.
And Amy's an I. Okay, those minutes are approved. Um, any comments for the April fifteen minutes?
No.
Nope, those are pretty pretty on target.
Okay, I had a couple changes, but there were some minor two, I think. Okay, hearing no more amendments amendments, do I have um a motion to approve the minutes for April fifteenth?
So moved.
As amended, sorry. Do I have a second? Okay, roll call vote. Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Next on the agenda is subcommittee updates. Any updates?
Not for me.
Nope. CPC is done.
Good, yeah. Design review didn't have any applicants, so we're skipping this month. Okay, after the election, Brad, we can go through and and see if you want any committees. Should you get elected?
Sure.
All right, um, next planning board meeting is on May fif- May twentieth? It says May twentieth, but is it? What's today?
Hmm, it is the twenty.
Yeah, the thirteenth, yeah.
Yeah, the reason I thought it was the fifteenth. Um, Lori? For the twentieth? Do you think we'll have Reservoir Street?
No. I got an email today saying, and I spoke to Bob Parente yesterday. He wants to continue once again. He's still trying to work out um the particulars for the Conservation Commission. He sent me an email today, but he didn't specify which meeting in June he wanted to be on. Uh, so I asked him to be more clear. Uh, so I'm still awaiting uh a follow-up email from him. So the only thing that we would have on the agenda at this point, unless you have something you wanna add, is uh I am going to ask for two letters of recommendation. I will be submitting a Mass Works grant application uh for nine Goddard Street. Uh, as you know from town meeting, they are interested in doing uh quite a bit of work um at nine Goddard. They're a huge retrofit of an existing building. They want to construct a new building. And they also want to construct parking lots uh to accommodate uh the the new workers, so they're anticipating hiring approximately sixty new workers, so they need to expand their parking lot to accommodate them. And the new parking lot would be across the street from their current facility, so they have asked me to apply for a Mass Works grant uh to help um cover the cost of some of the improvements, crosswalk improvements in particular, which isn't really a heavy lift. Um, but it's part of their effort to entice headquarters to invest in the town of Northborough, so I did agree to um apply for the Mass Works grant on their behalf. And then the other application, I believe I spoke to you about it previously. The town of Southborough approached uh Northborough to see if we would be interested in applying for a planning grant to do a a study of Route nine. Um, so it would be like a corridor plan uh that would cover the towns, uh Route nine within the towns of Southborough, Northborough, and Westborough. Uh, so I spoke to the select board about that, maybe a month or so ago. And uh they were in favor of it, so I will uh be also submitting a joint uh grant application. Uh, and it would certainly help uh bolster our grant application if we can have le- letters of support um from entities such as the planning board, the select board, master plan, the implementation, and the like. So I will uh draft these two letters for your consideration at the next meeting.
I just have a question on Mass Works. If we go for the Mass Works grant for Saint, for the company on nine Goddard, um does that mean we would be least, less likely to get it for something else in the town? Like, we've never gotten the Mass Works grant before, but I've always thought we could use it for a great project for the town of Northborough. But if we use it for this one company, are we hurting our chances of ever getting it again?
No, I don't think so. Um, they they look at each grant application on its merits. And in order to be competitive for a grant application, you have to partner with a private development proposal. So I am unaware of any private development proposals that are large enough to come forward um in the next year anyway. So I I think especially because Northborough has never gotten a Mass Works grant. Um, I I think we would still be competitive. And I'm not even sure. I I am a little bit concerned because this project is so small. Right, and Mass Works usually funds, you know, multimillion dollar utility extensions. So I I am already concerned about our ability to secure these funds, but you know, certainly, I wanna be business friendly. This would be a great opportunity for the town of Northborough uh to secure high-paying jobs uh as well as uh great you know, uh enable us to really secure a a firm in the town of Northborough who's been here for many, many years and has always been a good neighbor. Um, so that's why I agreed to to do this extra legwork.
Did you say sixteen or sixty jobs?
Sixty, six zero.
Okay. All right. Okay. Anyone else have any questions or anything you wanna add to the agenda? For May twentieth?
Anybody got any pet bylaws in the back of their mind?
No, no.
Not yet.
I I I need a break from zoning bylaws. I do. You already know about it, Lori, but um I've already started it, so, but it's not. We'll um get to it, maybe July, though. And I do. Just because we run out of time.
I do really, really wanna work on those subdivision regs. Yes, so particularly the section that pertains to common driveways, because we get at least one of those every single year. And the regulations are so antiquated that. I'm concerned. About uh projects that are going through our regulations being the way they are.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So maybe we can skip one of the June meetings if if we um, if we don't get anything else.
Maybe uh on our next um meeting schedule, we can talk about summer schedule?
Yeah, that'd be good. They can tell you, I can already, I'll be already be out for the July fifteenth.
All right, I will put that on the agenda, so everybody come prepared with your calendars for the summer.
Deal. Got it.
And with the committees that you wanna be on, if you wanna change committees, think about that. Too, we'll add that. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. See you guys on the fifteenth, or the twentieth, sorry.
Twentieth.